We are now live.
Okay, good afternoon. I'll introduce myself first. My name is Greg Evans. I am the current president of the Eugene City Council. And I want to welcome you to this interview. Let you know that you're one of our. It made our final group, our semifinal group. For the firms that we're interviewing to do our recruitment for a new city manager. We have three questions that we will ask you. And then we will have follow up questions after that. But we'll start off, we have on the, on the call. Council Vice President Lindsay Leach. Counselor Jennifer Yay and Counselor Allen Zelenka. And we also have city staff that are going to be on the call as well. So first things first. Do you have an opening statement for us? And then we'll dive into the questions.
Well, good afternoon. Thank you so much for having us. We're excited to be able to share some of our qualifications with you today. My name is Pam Derby. I manage the executive recruitment function here at CPS HR. I'm in year 22 plus now in our organization. We are what's known in California as a joint powers authority, which in Oregon is a intra local government arrangement. So we are actually a quasi governmental agency. We can only work with the public sector. By our charter, we can work with nonprofits as well, but it's a very small portion. Most of our work is in the local government sector. We do do some work with state and federal, but mostly cities, counties, special districts. I am actually a resident of Sutherland. So I spend a lot of time in Eugene, especially at the airport, frankly. But so with that, I don't want to take up too much of our time. I want to turn it over to Teddy Anderson. I know in our proposal, I'll just say that we had listed Travis Fox. Travis is will, will would probably be part of the team too. But he is on vacation this week. And so he also did his masters at U of O. And worked at the airport some. And so Teddy and Travis and I are all obviously very well acquainted with, with Eugene. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Teddy for her quick introduction.
Thanks Pam, I'm Teddy Anderson. I've been in local government for over 30 years now. I started my career in Oregon as a police officer, went to HR. Did several things in HR and then ended my career in local government in a budget, as a budget manager. And then been working for the, the firm for quite a while now. And then worked with a different, two different consulting firms with executive search. And I'm, I grew, I was born in Oregon, or Eugene, excuse me, and grew up in Oregon. So it's near and dear to my heart as well.
First question, we'll start off with Counselor Leach.
Hi, thanks for being here. Our first question is if you can please describe your last successful city manager recruitment and hire.
So, uh, well, I'm hoping I'm currently doing Sacramento city manager, which you can imagine is. Is quite an undertaking. And as of today, it closed Monday, we have 92 applicants. I think we have a good, strong pool. And so we're in the middle of that. We've done a ton of community engagement for this recruitment. You know, being the state capital of Sacramento, of California. It required several community engagement meetings, an online survey, speaking with several organizations that were. Considered by the city council to be organizations that we should engage with. So Zoom meetings with all of those. An online survey that garnered over 400 responses to it. And we have had a very robust aggressive outreach. I also think that. Simi Valley, we just did in the last couple of years, which is in Southern California. Is in Ventura County. Was, we had a great pool for that. They had had a long time city manager. Kind of in the venue, you know, the, the way Eugene has, my apologies, I'm a little aphasic. And so we had, they had several internal candidates. They had several strong external candidates. And so the issue there was making sure that the internal candidates, the external candidates were treated equally. And that, which is very important to us, that the process, it keeps the process. More defensible. And so they did choose an internal candidate. But it has gone very well and that city manager is there. I will say that it's a very small city, but I really think one of our most successful in the last. Five years or so is the city manager for the city of Marysville, which is only 12,000 people in Yuba County, California. That's home for me, basically. They had never had a true city manager and had suffered for it for many years. And I took it on saying that that's my goal is for them to have a true city manager. I was able to attract a great candidate who was an assistant city manager in Fresno. Who's now been there almost five years. And they have made several, they've hired an economic development coordinator. They have gotten rid of it sadly, it did have a fire, but they've been able to. Get rid of it, an all long time building, the Marysville Hotel that had been there for years and years and years that was empty. And so they're starting to try and have some economic development growth. Which is difficult in a city that's completely surrounded by levees. They don't have any place to annex or go. But the city council has just been thrilled. And sometimes I think, you know, I've done San Diego, I've done big cities and. But I think sometimes those smaller things have the most impact.
Second question, Counselor Yay.
Okay, our second question is, how will you approach recruiting a city manager for Eugene specifically?
So, and I'm sure Teddy will, will have some thoughts on this as well. But frankly, obviously the first thing we would do is speak with each one of the counselors, I think, and the mayor. It's really important to get your vision, what you're looking for in this next individual. As I mentioned with Sacramento, and I would anticipate with Eugene, that there would probably be quite a bit of some type of stakeholder community engagement that you'd like us to do. Before we start the process. Obviously, we are talking about a major university town. You may want us to, you know, I don't know too much about the city's relationship with. The university, what that looks like, but I've done quite a few recruitments in university. You know, I've done a lot of work in Berkeley. I've done, we did Columbia, Missouri, which of where is Mizzou, obviously. We've done Ann Arbor, Michigan. So some large university towns where that was a big part of the process was also looking. You know, they wanted a city manager that had that type of experience in working in a significant university town. So that could be a part of it as well. Obviously, I would anticipate this being a nationwide search, but it would need to be, I read the, the current budget. And I read the 2025 year in review, obviously someone who is, you know, very up on sustainability. You have been looking at all of the housing issues that we have here on the west coast, obviously. And so I think someone who fits that mold is probably who you're going to be looking for. But those are all those things that we need to talk to you about so that then we can put our list together. We do advertise nationally, it would go out to people across the nation. But all of our follow up outreach would be with those types of individuals that we think are going to be a good fit. For what you've told us is the ideal candidate. Teddy, what would you add to that?
I, I think just constant communication is key. I, I think letting you know what we're seeing out there, what we're hearing. In terms of the candidates, the, the partnerships, things like that, to see if we need to adjust any strategies. But really is about finding out what from you all, what you're looking for, what's worked well in the past. With the soon to be retiring city manager, what things you'd like to change, what upcoming projects. It really is just a, a lot of communication back and forth as we go through it.
Third question, Counselor Zelenka.
So how will you do all of that work, given you're not in Eugene?
Well, I basically am. I live in Sutherland, I'm 45 minutes away. So I basically am in Eugene, as I said. And there quite often on the weekends, I'm at the airport, frankly, all the time. I have a very intimate relationship with the airport. So we can do all of that. And I, I think one of the things about our team is that we are pretty passionate about Oregon. I've been here the last two years. My daughter went to SOU, got her bachelor's, her master's, her teaching credential, fell in love with an Oregon boy. Who grew up here in Sutherland. And so she's taught high school now in Roseburg in Sutherland for the last, and now in Oakland for the last six years. My dad retired to Gold Beach about 17 years ago, built a big house there. That was part of the reason that Maggie fell in love with the area. So we are basically in Eugene, so.
And Pam, you'll be the lead.
Yes, I would be the lead recruiter, but then I have such a strong team with, with Teddy and with Travis. Also Fatima Nukic, who is my associate recruiter, who's been with me 10 years now. And is a whiz at all of our systems, at logistics and keeping in contact with candidates. You know, she just is, and in that way. I say it has to be a team effort because as I said, I'm at the airport a lot, so sometimes I'm on the road. I always want whoever our point of contact is to have a couple of other people that they can reach if necessary. Although I always say this is a 24/7 position and, you know, everybody knows they can text me at any time. I'm on wifi on the plane, frankly, but Teddy, Travis and Fatima are fabulous backups and would be providing significant support as well.
One thing I would add to that is I think. We strive to. Learn our organizations in the areas really well. I think in most cases, people, I've never heard anybody say it's almost like you don't, it's like you don't live here. You know, the city, you know, the area. I think it really is about. Looking at it that way and doing as much research as we need to and knowing who to go to and figuring that out along the way. But you know, we, we are also very flexible. My dad lives in, in Oregon still. I think it's just a matter of just knowing what you don't know and, and researching it so that people think that you do live there. And in most cases, they do assume that we're from there, from wherever we recruit.
A quick follow up question. Can you describe your experience in developing diverse candidate pools? For these top C level positions?
That's incredibly important to us. I think you can see by our numbers. 57% of our candidates over the last three years have been female, people of color or both. And we would advertise obviously in, you know, the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, the International Hispanic Network, Women Leading in Government. There is a new Asian Pacific group that's also a subset of ICMA. We use Zoom info, which has a diversity filter. But we also see diversity as, you know, D E and I. B, we think the belonging is really important too. And we see that as the, you know, military. If necessary, some, you know, there are some organizations that want to make sure we're looking at veterans if possible. But we, for Sacramento, and we just sent in the EEO information, we keep track of that. For candidates who want to declare, so we keep track of that throughout the process. And so it really is a matter of, you know, one of the things is, is that. You want to do as broad an outreach as possible. And hopefully that brings you that diverse group of candidates. But also we want to make sure that we're advertising in those areas where it's really necessary. And that we're talking to those networks. So for example, we'll talk to the board members at NFBP to say, hey, anybody that you think would really be a great fit in Eugene. You know, we'll talk to the board in the, in women leading government, et cetera. Talking to those people as referral sources, it may be that they would be interested in the role. But they also, because they're thought leaders in the industry and they're in those organizations, they know others. Oftentimes it's the referral sources where we get the best candidates. So there's several different ways that we do that. Teddy is very involved in our outreach and sourcing. What would you add to that, Teddy?
I, I think when I've, when I've managed recruiting teams or the DEI process, I think it's important also to. Make sure that the organization is the right fit for these diverse candidates. Because they're interviewing, you know, you all just the same as you're interviewing them. And so whether there's affinity groups, we can content, let, you know, people connect with resources in the community. That would be specific to their backgrounds. And, and I think that's really important, just to think of it as, as it needs to fit both ways. And if they see people that have similar backgrounds and cultures that they, that they have in the organization or in the city. Then I think helping connect them to that so that they'll, they'll want to stay and want to be there is important also.
Now those counselors have follow ups.
Yeah, Counselor Zelenka. I had a follow up about. So my guess is that most of the candidates that'll be interested in this are going to be west coasters. And so most likely, yeah, I mean, they'll be outliers, but so. What's your network look like that you can go tap into to help recruit people? For this position?
Well, so I mean, Teddy's heard me say this, that, you know, everybody in California at least has my cell phone number. You know, as I said, I'm in year 22 plus and you just develop a very wide network. We do participate in many of the organizations doing conferences, et cetera. And I've just gotten to know people, you know, you get to know them over the years, doing reference calls as candidates, as referral sources. Because we still pick up the phone and talk to people all the time. I think I used Patrick Priest as a good example. I think we used him as a reference source. He's here in Oregon with, you know, the, I did his finance director recruitment many years ago. And I know he had just recommended me to the Association of Washington Cities recently. And so. Those are the type, you just gather those, that network along the way. I will say that our database of candidates from around the country, we have over 200,000 individuals in that database. In addition, in our LinkedIn. There are 30 individuals across our organization that also share every post that we push out. So we have a huge reach there. And the sourcing team also does significant. Social media. I leave that to them because it's not really my bailiwick at this point. But they do an extraordinary job with posting videos and all types of visual things. So we have a very wide reach.
Other counselors have questions? Looks like we've got about six minutes left for the interview. Counselor Yay, Counselor Leach. Anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. I have one other follow up question. I've made some notes on your, on your presentation. So can you expand a little bit more on your deliverables? So it looks like you're in the 30K range for the overall search. Additional $5,000 for background. Can you talk about that in terms of what's inclusive and what's outside of the deliverables on there?
Yeah, no, actually our, the $30,000 is our flat fee for the recruitment. So that includes all of our deliverables. That includes my, it includes any travel, it includes any of, you know, the deliverables that we provide to you. The background searches, reference checking, all of those things, advertising, the recruitment brochure. The extra $5,000 is a not to exceed, if you would like us to add that as an option for candidate travel. Because some organizations prefer for us to handle that. We have a travel team at CPS. And oftentimes it's much easier to send it through us than it is through doing it through the city for the candidates. And so that's an additional 5,000. The only other thing that we would charge extra for is if you decided to maybe do like a leadership assessment. We can do that through Hogan assessments. And those, that suite of tests is $450 per candidate. And then it's about $2,500 to $3,000 to bring in a certified assessor to do a workshop with you to explain the results. Because we think that that's, you know, that's really important. If you decide to do those, then we should have the certified assessor come in and explain the results to you. But that would be the only extra that there would be. Everything is included in that $30,000 flat fee.
I, I appreciate that clarification because I was a little confused on the. On the additional 5,000. I didn't know that was, I wasn't sure if that was background or. Other, you know, services that provided.
Yeah.
Appreciate you clarifying that. Do we have anything else? We're at 5:27 now, we've got three minutes left.
Counselor, we're actually scheduled to wrap up now.
Yeah, okay. So we're, we're, we're two minutes over time, so. Pam, I want to thank you, your team for engaging us in this interview this afternoon. And we'll be in touch.
Well, thank you so much. We're really excited about possibly being able to assist the city and we greatly appreciate you taking the time to speak with us. So best wishes.
Everybody.
Thank you, have a great weekend.
Bye bye.
Bye.
All right. One down, we got five to go. Let's see here. Proffman is next. Are they on yet or are they going to get on here shortly?
They'll probably be on in just a minute. They're scheduled from 5:30 to 5:50.
And hi, this is, this is Steve Worthingam, and I came on about 30 seconds ago.
You got it.
When you are.
All right. We're at 5:28, I don't think anybody will have a problem with us getting into this right now. We don't need to, to wait another two minutes. Welcome Steve. I want you to know, my name is Greg Evans. I am the current city council president for the city of Eugene. And on this call and in this interview will be counselors. Lindsay Leach, who is the vice president of our city council, Jennifer Yay, Counselor Yay. And Counselor Allen Zelenka. We are going to ask you three basic questions. And then we will have follow ups after that. But what I'd like to do, Steve, is give you the opportunity to do a brief introduction of. Your agency, your firm, and the highlights that you bring to this potential search.
Well, thank you, Counselor Evans, I appreciate the opportunity and I've been looking forward to chatting with you and fellow counselors and the city's team. First off, my, I can't see if I actually, if you can see if my camera is working, is it?
Yeah, your camera's working.
Okay.
Mine doesn't work very well, but yours is working.
Okay, great, that's good to know. So again, well, Proffman's excited to be working potentially with the city of Eugene and this important recruitment. We do this quite a bit around the Northwest and we deal in Oregon, Washington and other states as well. But Northwest states are, are bread and butter and we've come to do a lot of work in your state. I've done a number of recruitments, there are listed the materials we provided. And we were excited about helping our communities in the Northwest find the leadership that helps them come to the next level. For their elected officials to do the things that are important to them. So with that, given our short time together, I'd be happy to respond to any questions or discuss our materials, whichever way you'd like to go.
We're going to kick it off with the first question with Counselor Leach. Go ahead, Counselor.
Hi Steve, thanks for being here. My first question is if you could please describe your last successful city manager recruitment and hire.
Sure, I think that the one that comes quickly to mind is the city of Chehalis, Washington. You might pass through Chehalis on your way to Seattle or Tacoma or maybe University Place where I'm on city council and who's the mayor. But coming through in Chehalis, it was about a year ago that we placed a city manager there. I did that recruitment. The city council was very interested in some other specific areas that they were important, that was important to them. And it was about some economic development initiatives. It was about making sure that the identity of the community was represented. And then they can move forward with just a number of activities they had. So how that started out was I met with the city council members individually. They also encouraged me to meet with some of the board officials, a certainly a key department heads or all the department heads in this case. And hear about what their thoughts were too. And we took that information, put it into our profile. And, and this is our standard practice. That recruitment went, went reasonably well, actually went very well. And they hired a former small city manager from Oregon. And he's been there just about a year now. A few months before that, we, I, we also did the city of Centralia. And with the Centralia city manager, we placed them a little over a year. Last week, I was at the Association of Washington Cities Conference, sitting with the mayor of Centralia and the new city manager. As they celebrated their one year anniversary and hey, things seemed to be going well. So, and that is often the case. So I'd be happy to give you more details, but I know your time is limited, just want to respect that.
Second question is coming from Counselor Yay, Counselor Yay.
Yeah, how will you approach recruiting a city manager for Eugene specifically?
Well, a lot of it is really understanding what Eugene is looking for, which is to say what you're looking for. And so I would plan and hope to be able to meet with each one of the counselors individually, or perhaps in a small group, your choice. And talk about what your expectations are. Tell me about what your aspirations are for the community. What's the vision? Where do you as an individual want to go and where does the community, as you understand it, want to go? And then also let's talk about some challenges too. The things that are in the way, because often it's the challenges that I find motivate people to apply. It's those are the things that get them excited and for an experienced manager or an up and coming manager. Something that they have done before or wanted to do. And so challenges are important because one, they're real, but two, they're motivational and they bring people into, into the position that can match your needs. So once we have that conversation, we translate that into a job profile. And that's a key tool for us. And you can, we sent you a couple of examples from a current city manager search for Coleman. And another search that I did very recently for arts city, for arts director, giving a sense of what that's like. So does that give you a flavor of what, or maybe you have a question?
No, I think that's great, thank you Steve.
And our third question, Counselor Zelenka will be asked.
Yeah, Steve, so how will you do all this work, given you're not here in Eugene?
Yeah, so we, you know, I wish I could do all the work, but you're going to see me mainly, but there's a whole bunch of people with me. So in our materials, we've identified our team that is working on this and, you know. You'll see me at. At your council meetings, at either in person or Zoom as you choose, or your choice of virtual, whichever. at your council meetings, at either in person or Zoom as you choose, or your choice of virtual, whichever. I'll be doing the interviews, screening interviews with the candidates and selecting the candidates for those interviews in terms of screening. And because I'll be basing that on the information that you and I have shared or told me. And and then you'll see me in the interview process, final interview process, as well as presenting the candidates for you to to select from, and then the final interview. And as I facilitate that and and also support you through the decision process. So that's me. But behind me are two other experienced former chief executives in these are appointed executives, one's a former county manager, one is a former HR director. They are in the same role that I'm in. They're there to support each other, support me on this recruitment. And then in addition, we have the group of folks that help us do the outreach and and they're key and they do, they're very busy with all of that, but it works well. Jared will help put together that profile. Jared runs the email search program. He's got a great database that we've put together with over twenty years of searches with names of hundreds or rather thousands of individuals. And and categorized by type and interest and coming from mailing lists from organizations around the country. So that mailing list or that database is an important tool. Jared manages that. We have another person, Madison, who does social media. And and then Barry in our team does the ad placement. These are paid ads. It might be in government jobs or some other publications and will be on job boards that are both specific to city managers, but broader to public sector and will include most likely organizations that are that have a membership that is representing certain types of diversity. And so those are some of our key tools. Those are the people that work. There's also Sonia Proffman, our CEO. She's gonna be, you know, helping as well. More specifically, she works the mailing program and we do a direct mail outreach. There's hundreds of letters and job profiles going out to individuals. But of course, she's there if there's any any questions or issues or you want, you want to know, what if we change it? We do this. So you can help make those decisions or I can, depending on the degree of that. So those are kind of our team members and we outline those materials that actually we distributed to you this morning. And so it's a it's a good team. I'm glad to be part of it. You'll see a fair amount of me, but I'm not by myself.
Steve, we have a few follow-up questions for you as well. Can you describe your experience with recruiting diverse pool of candidates for this CEO level job?
Yes. So as I mentioned earlier, one of the it's a common interest and a very understandable interest. And so one of the things we we have done as we identified excuse me, different diversity groups that are in the public sector. These are professional organizations. They might be Hispanic or or some other diversity set. They, we do specific outreach through their, through those organizations. We've got a solid list of those. Barry routinely places ads on some joint programs that allow us to place one ad in in four or five or six of these diversity organizations. And so that's that's one of the ways we look at it. Uh, but we try and do some other things as well. That's more about in the moment of where we are and the opportunities that we see. And it's very much too about what are the opportunities that you're looking for? What are the, you know, characteristics that you're looking for? Uh, and so we keep an eye on what those interest sets are. And as you can help me understand those priorities, we'll know how to the best target. It's you can't fit everything in one person, but you can get a lot of things, helping to where the priority is and we'll focus there. And in that comes into play a bit, comes in place on with the diversity, the question of diversity. We have certainly we've placed people that are of just different genders, people of different sexuality, and certainly people of different colors and cultures. And we we look for for ways to accomplish that and it's a key piece of work.
For the other counselors, do you have any follow-ups for Steve?
Yes, Steve. So my guess is that the pool of candidates is gonna be predominantly in the West. And so you described a little bit about this. Can you talk a little bit more in detail about the networking that you have and the database and where are you gonna get, how are you gonna recruit all these people? How are you gonna recruit good candidates?
You know, so as I said, we've been at this, really Proffman's been doing this since two thousand. And that develops a pretty big, vast network for us. And then individually, I'm a former city manager. I've spent thirty-five years local government. I'm on the city council where I live today. And I'm, as I mentioned a moment ago, I'm a mayor of the community as well. All of that just puts a puts a large network in place also. And then my colleagues, there are senior consultants like myself. There's about six of us. We have different specialties or geographic areas. There was a mix of that. And and that, we have that network in addition. So when we're looking for some specific sets of individuals, we can work, we work together through that. I think our our big, what we really bring is that data set I was talking a little bit earlier about. And that's a strong, strong tool, but it's also networking. I go to I've been active with the Association of Washington Cities for, I said, I was at a conference last week with my thirty-six AWC thirty-sixth annual conference, let alone the other. The League of Oregon Cities typically meets and been, I've been the last three or four years attending Oregon League's. And that helps in addition. And then we've placed people all over this state, meaning Oregon and Washington. Uh, currently I'm in Vancouver, so I guess not quite in there. Any case, but we placed them all over the Northwest and we know people in the neighborhood that are existing city managers or they have an eager assistant who's ready to move on to the his or her next opportunity. And, you know, they'll they'll let us know too and we ask them as well. So depending upon what specifically the position may be in the town that they're being set. Uh, so that explains maybe a little bit more about the network and what we reach out at least a little bit.
Steve, another follow-up for you. So I note that you have a flat fee of eighteen five for your services. Can you describe your deliverables a little bit further? And if there are any additional costs that we could incur from your firm for this search?
You bet. Happy to. So the major deliverables for us are that position profile, or actually, let's back that up a little bit. It is the stakeholder's process where I can be onsite, meet with the counselors, meet with anybody else if that's the chamber director, the president of the university, or whoever it is you'd like me to talk to. Give me a list, help me make connections to them and I'll take it from there. But we use that information. And that's one of the deliverables is the stakeholders group. The next thing that feeds into is the position profile and that becomes a deliverable earlier, quite early in the process and is key to our outreach process. Not everything in the stakeholder process goes into the deliverables. I'll talk about that. The third deliverable for us is about a five-week outreach process. And this basically drives people to our website to put their application process materials together. And then after approximately five weeks, that time depends on how quick you need to turn it. I start going through those materials and setting up interviews. That next component then is the is a report that I write up and provides you in person or virtually but on paper as well, of my interviews with each of those people. And it also includes in that deliverable to you a a summary of my opinion of that individual and my likelihood to be successful in that position. And so that's where I've lost track. I think it's my fourth, maybe my fifth deliverable. Then you'll decide who you wish to invite to final interviews and then we'll run the final interview process. That's another deliverable. Uh, and and that, that's facilitating that process. And and then also, if you wish, I can help the the final hiring process, working out some of the details of your letter of appointment or whatever official vehicle you use to hire the person. And so those are the primary steps. The backing up a little bit, I had mentioned about the stakeholder information going into some of our other materials. It goes into the criteria that I use for the interviews, the screening interviews. And it's, not everything goes into that profile because I want to hold the information back that I use to see how the person matches your expectations. And so I just wanted to add that. And Counselor Evans, you know, I've been chatting and trying to do it quickly because of your time issues, but your second part of that question, help me remember what that is.
You know, what additional costs are involved outside of the eighteen five that you quoted us in your proposal?
You bet. So the eighteen five includes all of our services. What it doesn't include is the cost of advertising. So if you, the the things that are not included is whatever it costs for us to place ads on your behalf in different trade publications or job boards, that's an additional cost. Whatever it costs for us to send out those hundreds of pieces of mail, which is fairly significant, a thousand or more for the mailing, uh, that's an additional cost. It doesn't include my travel to your location. It includes my time, but not my travel. And it doesn't include candidate travel. So we know, none of us today know if you're going to invite two people or six people. We don't know if they live in Salem or Connecticut, you know, with just an unknown. It is whatever that member gets to be. And but we don't add anything to any of those costs. It is a it is a pass-through, but we can't actually control those largely. However, we can give you, we can, we want to identify a budget with you and and give you a sense of of how much you, you know, how much you want to spend on advertising. We can tell you if that's and seems like an adequate amount or or not. And then provide some feedback on the other pieces too. But also, we provide a guarantee and we provide a warranty. So the warranty, if you don't find anyone in the first search, we'll do it again with no additional service fee. Uh, but you would pay these costs that I just described to you. And and the guarantee is somewhat similar in that if the person leaves within the first eighteen months, then there's a little bit more to that, but I won't give them those details quite yet. But if they leave within the first eighteen months, we'll do the search again, again, for no search, no additional service fee, but you would have the expenses that I just provided.
Yeah, I noticed that eighteen month guarantee in your in your proposals. So
Okay.
I I appreciate that. Uh, other counselors, do you have any other questions for Steve? Anything else?
Well, from my side.
You want to finish some stuff up here? We have a few more minutes to go.
Sure, you bet. I I just wanted to say we're again excited about the potential to work with Eugene. I also wanted to share with you, I've I've lived in a college community, worked in a college community and a couple of them as a matter of fact, Cheney, Washington, Old East and Washington University, and Bozeman, Montana, where I was an interim community development director for about six years. Doesn't mean I know Eugene as well as I hope to when we get done with this process. But it does mean I have some sense of how college communities are a bit different. And and really, how I've always found them to be more cosmopolitan is the way I tend to describe. You may not feel that way at times, but it is a much broader perspective and a you have greater cultural resources, I always see. And it's been a pleasure to be part of when I've had that opportunity. But I just wanted to to touch on that a little bit and and mention some experiences that I had, both as an employee for the city of Cheney and then as an interim with the city of Bozeman.
Where are you, Steve?
I'm sorry, what?
Where are you located?
Yeah, I'm currently, I live in University Place, Washington, but I'm relocating to Vancouver, Washington, and I'm in a temporary home here. And then, but I'm back for council meetings, you know, and back for other things I need to take care of in University Place. So I'm still on council and the important thing from that perspective, I'm still registered in University Place. So my term, by the way, ends at the end of this year and I've chosen not to go. This is my, the end of my third term in twelve years. It's been great. However, it's time to put a little more time into other grandkids at this stage.
Thanks for your service, even though it's not our community yet. We we all know how tough it is.
Right, we've all been there. Exactly.
Thank you for your time for this interview. I know it's a holiday weekend. We wish you to have a great holiday and thank you for interviewing with us and we'll be in touch.
Okay, look forward to it and appreciate you taking time out of your night and holiday as well. Bye for now. Hope to see you again soon.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
We'll be right back. Okay. It looks like we've got two more minutes before we get to our third firm, which is Ralph Anderson and Associates. Start at five fifty-five on that. Okay, I think we'll get started on this next interview. So let's start off with Heather, are you representing Ralph Anderson Associates?
I am, yes. Heather Renshler, Ralph Anderson Associates, and I'm president and CEO of the firm.
Okay, great. Heather, I just want to kind of give you an overview of who you're going to be interviewing. Um, Heather, I just want to kind of give you an overview of who you're going to be interviewing with and um, we're gonna have uh, three uh, core questions uh, for the interview and then some follow-up questions. But what I like to do is start off by introducing who's on this call. Um, myself, uh, Counselor Greg Evans, I'm president of the city council, and Eugene. Um, also with us is Council Vice President Lindsay Leach, uh, Counselor Jennifer Yeh, and Counselor Alan Zelenka. Also, we have uh, city staff that's going to be on the call. They're not going to be participating, but they'll be listening in. Um, and so first of all, I would like to start off by welcoming you to this interview and then giving you the opportunity to give us a brief overview of uh, your firm and the services that you provide in this room.
Okay, well, thank, thank you very much. And again, Heather Renshler. And I like to think of myself as a working CEO. We are a small boutique firm. And so um, the way we operate is if you present to a client, then you are the individual that does the work for that client. So we don't have a sales team that goes out and sells and then, you know, uh, switching individuals, but um, so I would be the assigned staff that would work on this and I would work from start to finish. So soup to nuts, A to Z. Uh, I'm the individual that would work with you. Um, our firm is exclusive to public agency, local government clients. Now, that doesn't mean we don't get candidates from the private sector or people that have worked in both areas, public and private. But all of our clients are public agencies, cities, counties, special districts, airports, things of that nature. Um, and so that should give you the assurance that we uh, have been doing this for a long time. The firm was incorporated in nineteen seventy-two. Um, I joined the firm in eighty-five. I'm embarrassed to say that I've been with the firm for forty years. Uh, that is just a long, long time. And I, true, true, thank you. Um, and I have done all levels of positions and for different sizes of communities. And uh, that has been something I've been very proud of. I went back and I looked uh, in our records, having worked for the city of Eugene before. Um, it's been such a long time, though. Um, it dates back to uh, two thousand and one, two thousand and three, two thousand and six. Um, CFO, airport manager, executive director, planning and development, park and open space, division manager, planning division manager. So quite, quite a bit. Um, but I have not done anything recently for Eugene. Um, and maybe we were not on the bid list or life happens and we're working with other agencies. Um, I have been doing some work up in Oregon. I did some work recently for Lake Oswego. Uh, I did uh, work with city of Ashland and city of Kaiser. Um, so those were not city manager searches, they were city attorney searches, just happened to be a city attorney. Um, but many, many times, there's a uh, preference given to firms that are based in Oregon, you know, and so sometimes we don't compete as effectively. So um, our firm's been based in Northern California since its creation. Uh, I actually live in Nevada, um, just outside of uh, Reno, up the mountain at Lake Tahoe. Um, so I usually fly in and out of Reno. Um, and that's, that's usually my uh, home base. Um, we do work all across the country. And so we're registered to do work in like twenty-five different states. So we're, we're a national firm. And so that brings you that credibility. I know we only have a few minutes together, so I could talk forever, so um, I, I'll um, stop that. And President Evans, I just wanted to mention you have the sunlight coming through and sometimes it's hard to even see you. You have this majestic aura at the moment.
I, I, I'm, I'm well aware of that.
Okay.
It's something that, 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 that I've got to fix on my end, so. Just try not to pay attention to that diversion.
Okay, I thought it was my eyes.
It's halo. I'm not glowing, trust me. Uh, I'm not radioactive either. So we have three questions for you and we're going to start out with uh, Vice President Counselor Leach.
Heather, thanks for joining us. Um, we would first like to know, um, if you could please describe your last successful city manager recruitment and hire.
Sure. And I would like to talk about uh, city of Scottsdale. Um, I was retained to bring in the assistant city manager recently. Um, the outgoing city manager knew he would be leaving soon. Uh, national search to bring in an assistant city manager with the understanding that that individual would replace him when he uh, left the city. So um, election happens with the new council in Scottsdale and they decided that they wanted to determine uh, whether or not they would even do a search because they have this outstanding assistant city manager. And I did a very robust process. Um, we had multiple panels, department directors evaluating business community leaders that were part of the panel. And ultimately, and kudos went to me uh, with having done such a good job on that assistant city manager that the majority of the council felt, even though uh, I was disappointed I wouldn't get another contract to do the city manager search, it was the right decision for the city. And that is something I shared with them that that made me feel good, that I did a good job, that they would then be able to move into that role. So that I thought was a very, very successful search. And that appointment to city manager just happened within the last couple of months. So that was a major national city that I wanted to let you know about, so. Okay?
Uh, Counselor Yeh with question two.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so how will you approach recruiting a city manager for Eugene specifically?
Well, we have a kind of a procedure that we use, no matter what city it is, no matter size or scope. And that is uh, we work for you as the elected official. And so I come in as your staff. So I want to get to know each of you on a one-on-one basis. So I would schedule uh, at least an hour with each of you via video where we talk about, actually, I have usually three questions I put back on your plate. What is it you want to see in that new city manager, both education-wise and experience-wise? What are those attributes that you want to see? Um, we then talk about what are some of those issues that would, would be uh, out there that this individual would face on the short term or the long term? So that's my second question. And my third question is, how are you going to evaluate this candidate to know if they're successful? What are the measurement criteria that you're going to use? So I talked of each, each of you individually. And I also want to know what kind of rings your bell? You, you know, why did you get on the council? What's your hot button? You know, so that I know what has driven you to public service. And so that helps me. And so once I meet with all of the city council members and I, and I do recall, you know, you, you have eight wards, you have eight city council members, you have the mayor that votes if there is a tie, but they don't elect, uh, they don't select the city manager. But I do want to make sure I also talk to your retiring city manager so I can get a sense of what she deals with and, and also, of course, uh, the mayor in, in that role. Um, I then develop the brochure for you. I write the text. I write the lead-in, I write the qualities. Uh, we talk about the timing. And then as a group, you're going to sign off on that brochure, including the pictures that are used, the language. You know, I hope we don't have to uh, you know, nitpick commas and things like that. But this is for me to go fishing out in the world to say, what a great opportunity. And why people should apply for this. So once that brochure is approved by you, then we launch. And then we do the ads and we do the outreach. And I'm helping to identify passive candidates that don't even know this might exist or that aren't looking at the ads. But I can tell you, having worked enough in Oregon, you know, there are some quirky laws that you have with land use and planning and experience and exposure on some of that is oftentimes very, very vital. But the benefit that we have, that we can look broadly and I will do the first cut of everything, but you will see all the resumes. I'll share file with you electronically, but I'm going to put people in categories and give you my best recommendation of who we should see. And then we'll go through an interview process. I'll be on a video with you, bringing candidates into the room. I'll help you write those questions. We'll evaluate them and then we'll also do onsite interviews. So um, that's kind of the process I use to get to know you because I don't make the final decision. My job is to get you a pool of quality individuals, diverse gender, diverse ethnic background, uh, individuals that you will find viable in this session that we're going through. We'll also do article searches to give you uh, a little flavor of what they're de- dealing with as well. But hopefully that answers your question.
So Heather, we've got about um, seven minutes left in the interview and I want to let uh, Counselors Zelenka get in our third question. Counselors Zelenka.
Yeah, um, Heather, since you live in beautiful Lake Tahoe, uh, and you're not here in Eugene, how's this all going to work?
Well, we will have a lot of video meetings. Um, I know you have workshops on Wednesdays and so, and then council meetings on Monday, but there are some key uh, times that are really important to be boots on the ground. And that, that's really in, in my estimation, the final interviews. And that's where candidates come in. Uh, we make sure they get a tour of the city, uh, that they have time to investigate the housing. So I'm onsite when you do that. Uh, the rest of the time, like what we're doing now, if we're interviewing a candidate, we can have somebody from Santa Fe on the line. We can have somebody from, you, you know, uh, state of Washington, somebody from, you, you know, wherever across the country. And it, and it saves you money as well too, because you're not paying to fly them in. And we can get more uh, exposure by that time period. So I stay in touch with you as the collective body. You're my client. If you decide to use a subcommittee for this, then I work with the subcommittee. But sometimes everybody likes to see how the sausage is made. And so sometimes we're all in this together.
Um, yeah, Heather, you, you, you answered one of my follow-up questions, but I have a, another one for you here. Um, I noticed in your, your materials that um, you have a fixed fee of thirty-nine, seven, five.
Yes.
For all-inclusive of all the services that you provide. Uh, you also have an additional seventy-five hundred for a community survey. Can you talk a little bit more about what's included in those deliverables for the thirty-nine thousand?
Okay.
Plus the seventy-five hundred for
Okay.
the community survey, because we do a lot of community engagement in this process.
Okay, I'm going to start with the community's survey to begin with. You have quite, uh, you're in, you engage Eugene. Um, you have a way to get to people very effectively. I think with the tools that you have, uh, I could work with your team to be able to do that without having to have an outside survey that uses an uh, survey instrument. Um, but either way, uh, we develop uh, a set of questions and criteria for individuals to uh, res- to those particulars. And that's really used more for you in the final selection. Like what are some of the touch points? What are some of the issues? Rather than doing it before we float the brochure. Um, so that, you'll end up with an executive summary from me. Now, uh, on the uh, search fee, um, that includes my discussions with each of you to draft the brochure, to develop the brochure. My office designs the brochure. We put it in all the various advertisements. And so we budget for that as well. And then we're doing a lot of video meetings and you're going to get the resumes electronically. And so I'm not you know, using a lot of paper on needing, unnecessarily, we're using electronics. And, but it also includes me being onsite, my travel for the time period when we're doing those final interviews. What it does not include is if you are going to pay for candidates to come onsite for their travel. So you need to budget, if you say a thousand dollars a candidate or two thousand dollars a candidate and you bring in five candidates, you've got ten thousand dollars there. If you invite their spouse or partner as well and you're paying for it, that goes up. But with your budget constraints, I would not advise you to, to do that. But I would advise that we use video as much as we can to reduce the pool. And then we maybe bring in only three candidates and then maybe you can spend a little bit more money for them to be there a longer period of time to do the two, tour, maybe meet the team, things like that. But we also have to be mindful of internal candidates that might apply. Right now, I don't know if you will have any or not. But I treat them the same as I do on the outside.
Heather, uh, we have about two minutes left in the interview. I want to open it up for the other counselors. If you have other questions. Uh, Counselor Zelenka, do you have? Looks like you'd like.
Heather, could you quickly, you touched on a little bit, but can you touch on the, uh, explain more detail, your, your networking? How do you, where do you recruit from? How do you get, my guess is that mostly going to be west coast, but how, are you going to get?
Yeah, we're, yeah, yeah, we're, we're national, so um, you will get resumes from across the United States. We do use the ICMA uh, platform to get the word out. Um, I am a member of ICMA. Um, but we also use all the League of City um, and uh, network job boards as well, so that we, we will get as much as we can in the western region. Those other uh, areas are going to come up naturally as well through our outreach. Keep in mind, we've been doing this since nineteen seventy-two and we, we have a reputation that people know uh, th- they're on our job board listing. We also have access to those individuals. So I'm going to be aggressively going after people to let them know about the opportunity. So that is where it's not just targeted, but it's um, it's, it's the reverse of passive. It's not just waiting for somebody to see the job ad.
Great job.
Well, thank you very much. I've had a little experience doing this over the years, so. But I do want to say you have a you have a wonderful community. And I would be very proud to represent you in the industry. And I think it would be something I would really enjoy working with each of you. And we have to learn to trust each other. You have to like my scruples, my morals, my my judgment, because I might have to come back to you and tell you things that might be a little sensitive. But it's things that we need to share privately as we talk about candidates.
Heather, I want to thank you for taking the time to do this interview with us this afternoon. And we're at time right now. So I want to thank you again. Have a great weekend and we'll be in touch.
Okay, and maybe I'll see you on video on the ninth. Fingers crossed. Okay, thank you very much. Bye now.
Thank you. All right. That's who we have at six twenty is Raftellus. And so we got about, we got about four minutes for everybody to go to the restroom and deal with kids and other things.
Well, thank you so much for having us this evening. Very much looking forward to our conversation with you tonight. My name is Heather Gantz and I'm a senior manager with Raftellus. I've been recruiting in the local government space for close to twenty years now. And I am based up the freeway in Portland, Oregon. So I'm on the west side of the metropolitan area here in Oregon. And I have my colleague Sarah here with us this evening as well. I'll give it over the floor over to her to introduce herself very quickly.
Thank you, Heather, and it's a pleasure to be with you all today. We really appreciate your time and the invitation. And as Heather said, my name is Sarah Sleggers. I'm also a recruiter here at Raftellus, based in Southern California. But prior to this, I spent about fifteen years working directly in local government and higher ed administration, both west coast and east coast. So I'm really looking forward to talking with you all today. Thank you.
Great. So we have three standard questions that we're going to ask you. And Councilor Leach is going to start off with the first question.
And Sarah, yeah, I'm I'm Councilor Leach. And could you please describe your last successful city manager recruitment process and hire?
Absolutely. The most recent one local here in Oregon was this with the city of Tigard on the west side of the metropolitan area. Working directly with the council and city staff to identify a new city manager for them. We ultimately ended up, they ultimately ended up selecting Brent Stockwell, who was the assistant city manager in Scottsdale, Arizona. Fresh in my mind, I just actually had lunch with Brent last week to check in. He'd been on the job about three weeks and all was going well, successful integration into the organization. And I think one of the things that led to that successful recruitment was really truly spending time understanding the Tigard community, working directly with the council on what was important to them, understanding what was important from a city staff perspective as well. And then working directly to incorporate the various stakeholder groups that are relevant and important in the community as well. Pulling all of that information together and designing a process that really aligned well with the culture of the organization, the culture of the community. And then identifying unique needs that were specific to that particular organization ultimately led to a successful recruitment. Go into additional detail if you all have questions as well.
Councilor Yeh, you have a question, too.
Sure. Our second question is how will you approach recruiting a city manager for Eugene specifically?
I think it's important for the recruiter and the staff to really understand the organization, understand your unique needs. Understanding, you know, you have housing and homelessness challenges, you have budgetary challenges. And economic development is important. Those things are similar to other organizations, but you as you know your community well, you know your organization well. And it's important for us to spend the time to get to know you and your uniquenesses as a community, as as an organization, so that we can tell the story and create the narrative that's critical to the success of the recruitment. Being honest and transparent with candidates is critical as well. Not, no organization is perfect. And so being able to clearly articulate where the opportunities are, where those challenges may be. We'd look for that honesty and transparency in our communication with you all as we develop the recruitment brochure and the profile. Ultimately creating, as I said, that strong narrative and telling your unique story to prospective candidates will really be beneficial in creating a successful process.
Question three, Councilor Zelenka.
Yeah, Heather, since you and Sarah are here in Eugene, how is this all going to work?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, you know, I think beneficial that I am physically located in Oregon. So not too terribly far from you all, could easily be there in person for some of the larger pieces in the process, certainly from the final interview standpoint. But I, you know, clear communication through email, certainly leveraging technology, much like what we're doing right now, I think is critically important, setting clear expectations, clarity around timelines, and then really making sure that you and your fellow colleagues on council understand where you're needed in the process, where your input is needed, where staff's input is needed and creating that timeline that we adhere to throughout the course of the process. So really clearly setting expectations from the beginning. And then, of course, as I said, being I could easily come down the drive, make a drive down I five and be there within a couple of hours as well.
Oh, I know that we've got some follow up questions for you, Heather and Sarah. One of the questions that I have is can you describe your experience with recruiting pools of diverse candidates for C level positions like this one?
Yeah, I think there are a number of factors that go into successfully recruiting a diverse candidate pool. Certainly, we would advertise the position in some key locations. We would work the professional associations. We, Sarah and I have wonderful colleagues that are on NFBPA committees, so leveraging our networks, working the alumni associations. I think direct outreach is critical. You know, I think we pride ourselves on doing unique outreach specific to each recruitment that we are working with. And so doing that direct outreach and working our referral networks is also a critical part of that process. And then we are constantly monitoring the pool of candidates, right? We are paying attention to who is coming in, what those candidates look like, what their backgrounds are. Are we missing something? Do we need to refocus our research and outreach? Or, you know, further take a deeper dive into some of our networks? So really, being able to be nimble and flexible along the way to adjust based on what we're seeing in the applicant pool.
Another quick follow up, and then I'll turn over to Councilor Zelenka. It looks like he's got one, too. And anybody else who wants to. So can you talk a little bit about your deliverables? So I know in your application that you have an all inclusive set of deliverables between thirty seven thousand and forty thousand dollars. That, does that include the community focus groups? As well as the leadership coaching, or is that outside of that thirty seven to forty thousand dollar range?
The leadership coaching is an additional add on fee. Our, our fee for Sarah, do you have that direct number in front of you?
It's dependent on the scope of the coaching engagement. It's an optional service, by the way. We like to always include it in our manager proposals, knowing that sometimes someone new to the organization needs a little extra assistance getting acclimated. It typically runs around ten thousand dollars, but again, it's calculated based on the coach's hourly fee, which is two sixty. So that's just kind of most commonly where the total lands with the number of coaching hours that gets scoped out for a city manager or equivalent. But I can speak a little bit more to what our fee includes, Councilor Evans. Yeah, it does include one community listening session, just speaking specifically to your question about community engagement. So that one listening session is included in our fixed fee. In our proposal, we included some additional costs for additional engagement elements that we are happy to provide, depending on what your needs are and how much and what type of engagement you'd like to see in the process. And those prices are in our cost page in the proposal. We're very flexible on that point. And as part of our initial discussions with you, we do usually scope out what you'd like the community engagement, external stakeholder engagement to look like. And in terms of deliverables, the fixed fee covers all of our time, all of our travel. It does not include candidate travel. It's our standard practice to have that be handled by the city that we're working with. And I will say, if for some reason, I doubt this will be the case for the city of Eugene, but if for some reason, the first, you know, initial round does not yield a strong pool of candidates that you are happy with, we will continue to do that outreach that is covered by our fixed fee, you know, until you reach a finalist pool that you are happy to move through final interviews. We do prepare candidate review materials for you. You will see all of their application materials. We will net it out for you, so to speak, the strengths, you know, pros and cons of each candidate that we're going to recommend to you as the kind of cream of the crop. And then, again, we'll be with you in person for the final interview process, facilitating that from start to finish. And our travel expense and time for that is included in the fixed fee.
Do other councils have questions?
This is just an interest. We just spoke to another firm that also worked in Scottsdale and they were trying to fill the assistant city manager position. So it's my understanding that their assistant city manager came up to be city manager of Tigard and then they refilled that position down there. That's really fun. I guess my actual question then is, do you work with other recruiting firms to kind of coordinate some of that, those pieces? Because this isn't a massive pool of people across the nation, right? This is a bit of a smaller pool than some other other jobs. Have you ever coordinated?
We have not coordinated directly with other firms. I think we all have, I think we all know each other well. We have all crossed paths over the course of our tenure doing this work. As you mentioned, it's, you know, it's a small group of individuals that that call this work, you know, our passions areas. And so certainly we know each other. We see each other at conferences, but we don't directly solicit each other during, you know, during the recruitment process. Did that answer your question, Councilor Leach?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Zelenka, do you have a follow up?
Yeah, Heather, can you describe a little bit of it? Can you describe a little bit more about your your network, how you use it, how you're going to get these good candidates in the door? Trusting with you.
Yeah, I think it, I mean, I think there's a number of things that go into that to ensure that you've got a positive network. I think it it's constantly sharing opportunities. I think, you know, one of the things that I pride myself on is a really strong candidate experience as a part of the process. So really making sure that I am setting the candidates up for success. That starts from the very first conversation that I'm having with them. It's telling them about the opportunity, giving them as much information as I can, answering their questions, ensuring that they can have a honest and confidential conversation with me as they consider and explore opportunities, right? We are constantly dealing with candidates that are exploring opportunities. Maybe they're not necessarily seeking a a new opportunity. They're not necessarily running from anything, but this particular opportunity has piqued their interest or it's a particular location that they're excited about. And so sharing and information with them to give them enough information to make an informed decision at each stage in the process, I think is something that is is critical to the success of creating a strong candidate pool. I think that it also boils down to making sure that they are well informed, that you are well informed, right? I'm sharing information with you to help you make informed decisions just as much as I'm sharing information with the candidates to help them make informed decisions. So very transparent, very honest. And I think that helps to attract a good reputation, honestly, in in this work. You you're not successful if you have not spent the time cultivating and vetting a strong network that is referral based, that people are willing to say, hey, I've had good experiences with this particular person, you should talk to them. Or, you know, Heather has always given it to me straight, right? She is not trying to sugarcoat information. She'll she'll be honest and transparent with you. And you can expect that in in return in working directly with with someone like myself. So I pride myself on that. I think it's an important part of the process. I always want a candidate to say, there were no surprises when I joined the organization, right? I wasn't surprised about anything. I knew what I was getting into, good, bad, or indifferent, right? And sometimes there's more good than bad, and we hope that's the case. But making sure that candidates don't have surprises coming into an organization, I think, is is critical.
If I can, I just want to add one more thing. I'm sure you all will be speaking with other firms that work across the country as we do here at Raftalus. But one thing I do think sets us apart is the diversity of our team in our executive recruitment practice. We are racially and ethnically diverse. We are age diverse. We are geographically diverse. We have diverse professional backgrounds that we brought with us here at Raftalus. And that means our networks really are quite broad in every sense of that word. So we we do have a lot of reach. And I do think you will be attracting nationwide interest in this position. You have a great community. This is a unique opportunity. I do think that you're going to see a large response.
Does anyone else have follow up questions for Heather and Sarah? If not, I want to thank the both of you for taking the time out to interview with us this afternoon and on a holiday weekend. So we will be in touch. Enjoy the weekend and this concludes this interview.
Thank you so much for taking the time with us this evening. We really appreciate it.
We really do. Thank you.
Happy fourth to you.
Thank you.
All right.
Bye bye.
Did you hear me, Wendy?
She might be trying to connect to audio. Hang on, let me give her a send her a message.
I don't have video. I don't have wrong audio unless you're going to start us off here.
Wait a minute.
Levi?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay.
Two which can talk.
Yeah, so you want you want you want to kick us off here?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and kick us off. We'll see if Wendy's audio or tends to to doesn't tend to work when it needs to work, I guess. So well, hey, thank you all for the opportunity to to speak with you tonight. My name is Levi Coleman. I'm one of WBCP's executive recruiters. So I've I've had the pleasure of serving Oregon municipalities, California municipalities, up the West Coast from a city manager level and down. So speaking for Wendy, Wendy's president owner of WBCP. She's been in business for for twenty five, thirty years, something, something to that extent. Started her her business with the county of Orange down in California and and just kind of grew word of mouth until a few years ago. She became an empty nester and decided to start growing the business. And now we're at about a team of of thirty or so. So that's just a little bit about our background. Do you want me to kind of step in or just take over how I I see fit? Or is there any other questions that that you have for me specifically?
We have three questions. They're going to be core to the interview. And we're going to start off with Counselor Leach with the first question.
Hi Levi, hi Wendy. Hopefully you can join us. But our first question is if you could just describe your last successful city manager recruitment and hire?
Yeah, so I'm going to speak on both of our behafts. So a little bit about us, we do have a couple of different executive recruiters within WBCP. Each of our recruiters has their own project manager. Each of them also has their sourcers and with our centralized marketing team, which I will get into here just a little bit. Personally, I just wrapped up the city of Telomok city manager recruitment. It was a lot of fun. I'm here in Tigerd FYI, went to Corvallis, Oregon State. But that one, sorry. Oh, there it goes. It's working. And so
We have other beavers in the room.
Okay, well, that's good. Good to hear. So don't worry, no ill will for them leaving the PAC twelve, but it is what it is. But anyway, so that was a lot of fun. Oh, sorry, what was that?
Sorry, go ahead. Were you in the middle of, were you in the middle of answering a question?
Yeah, so we're going to be talking about our last successful city manager recruitment. I was just talking about the the city of Telomok. They they were fantastic to work with. We had them candidate, we got them some great candidates. They made a great selection, really from a national search. We had we had individuals across the United States that were interested in the role. So Wendy just also finished up Santa Monica's city manager recruitment. So now Wendy, that you can hear us, I'll go ahead and kick it on over to you to talk about how that went.
Yeah, went great. We had almost two hundred applicants, actually. Santa Monica is a real desirable place to be. We had a pretty broad range of candidates, even private sector that the council were interested in seeing. So we, but we got it down to a hire. And yeah, they are, they, we just got through that one too. So they were kind of running simultaneously while Levi was doing Telomok. So sorry about all of that. I my headset was working all day today. I'm not sure why I had such a hard time getting on. But thank you for having us. We're very excited to be here and looking forward to the opportunity to potentially work with you.
So Counselor Yay has our second question.
Thanks. So how will you approach recruiting a city manager for Eugene specifically?
So every community is unique. So it's really our job to make sure we find out what's unique about Eugene. The nice thing about that is I've been living in Southern Oregon for over two decades now and Levi is up close to Eugene. And so we happen to know Eugene uniquely well. So but we haven't worked for Eugene. We will want to get intimately knowledgeable about what would attract somebody to your organization and also what you're looking for in an ideal candidate. So that usually happens during stakeholder engagement and our kickoff meeting. And our kickoff meeting really defines the framework for the recruitment, identifying, you know, both internal and external stakeholders that you want us to reach out to. Getting that three sixty perspective really helps us identify what everybody is looking for. Although we know that our client is the elected officials, we pull all that information together and provide you a summary of that input as well to be able to make sure that you can hear other people's interests, the ones that you wanted us to reach out to. Usually that includes a community survey, staff survey, usually some unique business or other stakeholder groups, maybe the university, things like that. So Chamber of Commerce. Sometimes we have organizations that want us to reach out to a lot of nonprofits. So we might do a group meeting. So there's a lot of different ways we gather that information to identify the ideal candidate profile. We're doing a recruitment right now for Aqua, which is the water. It's the Water Association for California. They have four hundred and seventy members, thirty eight board members. And we were able to pull the selection committee and the thirty eight members together who all had to approve the recruitment announcement and the ideal candidate profile. So we're really good at bringing a lot of voices together to really help you identify what you, what everybody is looking for in an ideal candidate. So that includes both technical and interpersonal and we'll customize the profile and recruitment process from there.
And our third question, Counselor Zalika, go for it.
So Wendy and Levi, you're not here in Eugene. So how are you going to make this all work?
We're not there, so how are we going to make it work? Is that I heard you say?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we're really close by. I'm two hours away. How far are you away, Levi?
Yeah, about an hour and a half, depending on traffic. Yeah.
Yeah. So most of our clients are not that close. So we seem to do a really good job of that. Throughout the twenty one years we've been in business, most of our clients are actually in California because that's, I think, I, I think Levi did a quick intro. That's where I'm from. I started my career at the county of Orange, working in the CEO Human Resource Department, and then took this into my own business twenty one years ago. We have about twenty five employees. We have two offices in Oregon and five across California and a couple of other satellite offices across the US. But I think two hours is a is an easy breezy thing for me. I'm regularly driving five to my Bay Area clients. So anything over seven hours, I usually take a flight, but otherwise I don't mind driving. So if you need us to be in person, we also think that, you know, with virtual opportunities today, we'll try and make sure that we, you know, at least provide those opportunities for you. But whenever we can be in person, we prefer that as well. So if that's an option and that's a preference, we will be there.
What part would you do in person, do you think?
What's that?
What part would you do in person, do you think?
So I think that there's some critical moments in Um, so I think that there's some critical moments and since we are only two hours away, I would say that the most important part, it depends. You might want us to do a national community meeting in person, so if that's something of interest, we could certainly do that. That would probably be the part that we would do in the front end. Maybe even do a, a department head meeting in person versus virtual. We'd usually do that virtually for our clients that are maybe a little further away. Um, I, I did actually travel to Pasadena for an in-person that, that, when I did the city manager recruitment for Pasadena, they're very, very hands-on in, 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 in-person organization that, um, and so I did a lot of in-person meetings then too. So it really depends on our clients' needs and their community interests. Uh, we just, I just did the, um, city of Boulder City city manager as well in Nevada, and that was also a lot of, uh, FaceTime. So I actually came out for the kickoff meeting in person as well as the shortlist and interviews. So those would be the main areas that you'd probably want to see us in person, which is, um, the shortlist, uh, which we would definitely want to be there in person. Uh, where we actually can physically provide you binders instead of doing it virtually, but we're also very adept at doing that. So if there's some people that couldn't make it and we needed to provide a virtual, um, engagement, that's fine too. And, um, and then of course the in-person, uh, interviews, we recommend first round interviews be virtual. Just because less candidates drop out, especially if this is gonna be a national recruitment. If this is a preferred, you know, candidate coming from your state, then, maybe we'd have less people dropping out, but it kind of depends. Uh, we give you a couple of options. We usually say, hey, do you want a back-to-back first and second day interview, all in person? That does require somebody to take three days out of their work life when you're looking at city managers and city man, and city administrators. Sometimes you're voluntold or to be somewhere or an emergency happens and, and unfortunately, um, that might, take out some of your top candidates. So we, we do want you to, we'll, we'll give you some recommendations and options, and one of those would be, virtual first round interviews with your panel. Depending on how that looks, that could be a subcommittee of you involved. Uh, that could be, um, just you, um, Santa Monica, just one council involved in the interviewing, uh, pro, process. Uh, and the last day we had, uh, a group of, uh, a hand, a handful of, uh, staff that met with final candidates. So there's lots of different ways you can make a recruitment and that's what we'll do when we do our framework development and our kickoff meeting to really bake it. We'll get, come forward with the framework and we'll customize it based off of what you're looking for.
And I know that we've got some, uh, follow-ups for you. Um, let me just, let, let, let me, let me start off actually by saying that, um, you answered one of my follow-up questions in your presentation materials about diversity and your success around that. Can you talk to, talk a little bit about, I've noticed that you had done it, sixty-three percent of your placements were diverse candidates. Uh, can you talk about that and your process for, uh, placing those candidates? And I know that you've done stuff in Independence, Rogue River, um, you know, Gold Hill.
Yeah, so, um, so on average, we're hovering around sixty to sixty-five percent diversity. That includes ethnic as well as gender diversity. So, uh, one year we actually were seventy-one percent diversity in placements. I don't know, maybe even closer to eighty percent. It was a crazy year. Um, we were on average around hovering between fifty-five to sixty-five, um, before we got Circa. But during the pandemic, you know, a lot of people wanted to see diversity in the ad plans. I think Levi might have talked to you about this before. I got into public sector recruiting. My background was in marketing and branding. So, um, that's really been helpful for me to be a successful recruiter. It's also, um, also how we kind of really designed our organization a little different than our competition. But I'm always interested in return on investment, making sure that every dollar spent is actually gonna get us a potential candidate. Uh, so, um, when people were talking more about diversity, they wanted to see diversity in job boards and diversity job boards went from ninety-nine dollars to three hundred or four hundred dollars overnight. And it was costing my clients a couple of thousand dollars more for their advertising campaign, so we were actually, um, looking at potentially drive, starting our own, uh, diversity job board for public sector when we stumbled along to Circa, which is the parent company for all the diversity job boards. They own six hundred diversity job boards. And, um, we pay a subscription. Right now I think it's around fifteen thousand dollars a year. And, um, and, uh, so anytime something posts to our job, so if we did your recruitment, we ta, have it on our applicant tracking system and it would automatically post out to the six hundred different diversity job boards and then also automatic outreach to twenty thousand or up to twenty thousand local community organizations. That could include N double A C P and several others. And they also have, um, I think it's a two million, um, uh, resume database as well. Uh, in our first year with Circa, we saw a twenty-one percent increase. That's when we had that crazy year of seventy percent placements and over eighty percent of our applicants were divorced. So I can't say for sure if it was Circa, but it was the biggest difference we, we had, we had, um, applied. Um, they aren't really targeted, um, to a specific, um, industry. But it's definitely something that, um, we've been able to bring to our clients for a three hundred dollar fee. We, um, we give you access to that, so. Um, it's always been something that, with just a, you know, uh, council member Evans, just a, I mean, it's been something we've talked about for decades, though. It's not something new for us as recruiters. We've always been focused on trying to bring diversity to our applicant pools because they should, our, um, our employees and our public sector should look like the community they represent. And that's just one good benefit.
Yeah, I also noticed that, uh, Christie Worster is part of your team and Christie and I served together for League of Oregon Cities Board. So.
Yeah, great. We're hoping at minimum she'll be willing to headhunt for us with this one. She's got such a great network in Oregon. Um, but she's worked with, uh, she worked with Levi with Tillamook. Um, she worked with me at Independence. She, she facilitated a panel with me at Independence, so she's great. We love working with her. Yeah.
Councillor Zalinka, you have another question?
Yeah, I think you had answered it about what's your network, but I did have a question about, most of your clients seem to have been much smaller cities than Eugene. Um, how do you address that?
I mean, in Oregon, that's true, uh, but I wouldn't say overall, we've definitely done, you know, I mentioned Pasadena, we just did Santa Monica. Uh, we've done others, um, Oxnard, Ventura, um, we did, um, you know, several others that were larger cities. I think what's unique, what's important, and I think this is where the marketing background comes into play and, um, and I, and I can say that all of our recruiters, no matter who you get, um, I, I spend twelve to, I, I, sorry, six to twelve months training, um, very hands-on with any recruiter you'd ever get at WBCP, so, uh, we've really worked as a team here, um, and, um, and, uh, and anybody that you, I think the most important part is getting back to that marketing piece, is really identifying what you're looking for in an ideal candidate. Really understanding what the community is that you're serving. And it's not as easy honestly to fill a position that has three employees, first city manager or Hubbard. Um, they wanted, they wanted somebody who was an accountant and a city manager, so. Um, that's hard to find. They wanted somebody who was a finance person and an accountant person and a city manager, and she's fantastic. She was a purple unicorn. She was great. Um, so it's actually a little bit harder when you have less staff. You have to be a much more, you have to wear twelve hats. You have to be a subject matter in a lot of them. So, um, every recruitment comes with a different challenge, whether it's cost of housing or it's very rural or it's very big or it's too urban or, you know, whatever it might be. Every, every, every community comes with its benefits and its challenges. And that's what we figure out what those are. But as far as the size of Eugene, I, I think that it aligns very closely with a lot of the recruitments we've done.
You have, uh, two minutes left in this interview. Um, I want to give you the opportunity to, um, uh, address your deliverables, so it, it, you have a, uh, top price of twenty-five nine. Um, what additional services will we expect to incur, uh, on top of that twenty-five nine?
That's, that's plus expenses. So the expenses part will probably be around, yeah, will probably be around sixty-nine hundred. Um, that includes, uh, the advertising campaign, travel to and from, the recruitment. I think the additional expenses that we would be talking to you about is travel for candidates. Um, uh, but the background and reference checks are all included in that. And, you know, you know, some people charge extra for doing surveys. We don't. All of that's included. All the stakeholder engagement, everything that's in our pro, on our proposal. From the time we start the recruitment to the time we've ended and the cost that it runs, that it, that it is for running the recruitment, that's all inclusive. It does include like background references for one candidate, so if we needed to, you know, do two candidates, which is very rare and we don't recommend it, um, for two references or something, it would be an additional four hundred dollars. Uh, the nice thing about our expenses too, they're all pass-through, so whatever we pay, you pay, so. Um, we, and we keep track of that. I know some people just say, hey, bulk rate thirty-seven thousand or forty-two thousand or whatever it might be, and whatever expenses we have, we cover, but we, we feel that you should have to pay for expenses that we actually, you actually incur. Um, so if there's, there's usually money left over in that sixty-nine hundred, I think is what it, what we quoted. Um, there's usually money left over. Um, unless you're asking us to cover some other things, like we'd be happy to increase that expenses and cover candidate travel for you, so if it's a little easier for us to pay for that directly, sometimes our clients ask us to do that. Uh, but I think that with the one minute we have left, I would say the thing that you should know about us that, um, is really important is we know how to represent you as an employer of choice. We know, we, we, uh, are very respectful to our candidates and our applicants, no matter whether they're qualified or not. Uh, everybody that goes through recruitment process with us is treated fairly and respectfully and they're informed regularly throughout the recruitment process. Uh, we handle all the details. Uh, we are not gonna lean on your staff much. We're gonna want to ha, have them help us get contact information to coordinate panels and calendars and rooms. But other than that, we don't think that it's, um, it's, uh, your staff's, uh, job to manage the recruitment details. We handle all the logistics for as much as we can. Um, we also, uh, our, I don't know if you saw our mission, but our mission is to serve people who serve people. We're public sector servants at heart. And we really care about the outcome of a, a recruitment process. Our hearts are really into it. We really want it to turn out well both for the candidate and you, and the process that we go through is very thoughtful. And I think that it's a really skilled process. The things that we put in place that get you through the recruitment process really get down to who this person is and the ideal candidate. And the only other thing that I would say that you might want to do that would be an additional expense is maybe some, you know, personality tests or things like that, that we could certainly do for you, uh, once we get down to the final candidates, but I think could identify operational, um, success, and those are about five hundred dollars apiece.
We're at time now. Um, thank you Wendy and Levi for interviewing with us this afternoon on a holiday weekend. And, uh, we will be in touch.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Got one more to go. All right. Okay, so we're, we've got, we, we've got Bob Murray and Associates on, uh, for the interview. And, um, so this is, it looks like we have, uh, Valerie and Jeff on from, uh, Bob Murray and Associates. So, um, let me kind of give you an overview of who's on this call and, um, uh, how we're gonna proceed through the interview. Uh, my name is Greg Evans. I am, uh, si, current city council president for the city of Eugene. Uh, we have, uh, three other councillors on this call and interview. Uh, we have council vice president, uh, Lindsay Leach, uh, councillor Jennifer Yay and councillor Alan Zalinka. We also have city of Eugene staff, uh, on the call. They won't be asking questions. We have three core questions that we're gonna ask you and the councillors will take one each to ask you in terms of the presentation. And, um, to start us off, uh, tell us, uh, briefly a little bit about, uh, yourselves and the firm.
Great, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity and, uh, I understand we're the last firm to, to present. I'm sure you're all very tired, so thank you for your time.
You're bad in cleanup. You're bad in cleanup.
Okay, um, my name is Valerie Gata Phillips and I'm president and owner of Bob Murray and Associates. Um, I've owned the firm for about twelve years, uh, worked for Bob Murray for about two years, uh, before buying the firm, so my husband and I own it. Husband and wife team, Latina-owned business. Uh, prior to that, um, I was conducting executive C-level recruiting for the private sector, C-level executive recruitments for pre-IPO companies, public companies, um, nationwide, but I was centered out of the Bay Area and kind of Silicon Valley. And, but the last like fourteen years now, it's been, uh, government-related executive level recruitments, primarily city manager, county executive, uh, police chief, uh, assistant city manager, public works director, uh, CFO, you name it, we, we've placed it and, um, excited to be here. Um, we're a boutique-sized firm and I've got Jeff Mori joining us. He's, I'll let him give you a little quick bio on himself.
Yeah, thank you Valerie. Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Jeff Mori. I currently live in Vancouver, Washington. Uh, I spent the bulk of my career, about twenty-six years at the Washington County Sheriff's Office there in Hillsboro, Oregon. Um, I finished my career there as the under sheriff and then went across the river, joined the Vancouver Police Department recruited by Bob Murray and Associates. And, uh, eventually was the chief of police there. I retired, uh, this last October and joined Bob Murray and Associates. Um, I feel like I really know Eugene quite well. I, I don't hold it against me, but I did go to Oregon State University, uh, played football there, never won any games against the Ducks, um, but always huge fan and, uh, I love the city Eugene.
Where are you Valerie?
I'm based out of California. Um, I grew up in the Bay Area and live near Sacramento. But, you know, we're, we're a nationwide firm, but I'd say primarily most of our recruitments are the west coast, done a lot of work in Washington, some work in Oregon, um, California. Those seem to be our busiest states. I just placed the ace, the city manager and the DCM in Vancouver.
I, I, I noticed that. So we have three core questions for you. We're gonna start off with, uh, councillor Leach with, uh, question number one.
Hi Valerie, hi Jeff. Um, thanks for being here tonight. Um, you touched on the, your city manager recruitment in Vancouver. Um, so my question kind of leads into that. Um, if you could describe your last successful city manager recruitment and hire?
Okay, so I could talk about Vancouver, but I think the most recent I had, um, because Vancouver was the end of last year. And so the most recent I've had was the city of Folsom here in the Sacramento region, so city of Folsom, population about eighty-five thousand. Uh, uh, full-service city, you know, police, fire, um, you know, great, great little city, kind of small-town feel, very, um, uh, tr, trails and parks, that's their thing. I know people know it from Folsom Prism, but right on Folsom Lake. And they've got, you know, abundance of trails and that's kind of their thing, very green, very, um, very family-oriented community. So that was my most recent. I'm working on a couple of recruitments now. One is for the city of Oakdale. In fact, I have interviews tomorrow. They're known as the cowboy capital of the world. Small little town here in California and I've got city manager recruitments there tomorrow. And if you're asking kind of how those recruitments went, you know, in Washington and even when I, one that I did in Sparks, Nevada and Colorado, those were open recruitments, so. They're run a little differently. Um, you know, you get to be public about, you know, and publishing names and all that kind of stuff. California, we, we don't have to do that. It's a little different. It actually makes it a little easier, but it's, you know, it's just different. Uh, Nevada and I think, I know Washington and I believe you guys, don't you have to be kind of open recruitment, announce, publicize names? Okay, so yeah, so I've done both, because they are very different.
My second question is coming from councillor Yay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so the question is, how will you approach recruiting a city manager for Eugene specifically?
So I think what's important is, you know, if we're awarded the recruitment, it's that one-on-one with each of you, each of the council members. To find out, you know, kind of what you're looking for, um, those soft skills, those technical skills. Um, is there going to be a potential internal candidate? Kind of your thoughts on that? Um, get the culture of the organization, the best that you can share me about the culture, as well as the community. I mean, I, I conducted a public works director search for you guys about, about a year and a half, two years ago. Um, so I got to work with your team there, um, kind of got to understand a little more your core values and just, you know. So it really resonated with me, just being from California, a lot of the similar things that are important, whether it's climate, diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, so I think understanding what it is all of you are looking for, building that timeline and the recruitment to be what the city needs. I'm gonna guess you guys are gonna want some stakeholder input, and so I've done a lot of that. I did that in Vancouver, Louisville, uh, for most of my recruitment. Whether that, that can look very different. It can be a town hall, town hall style. It could be, I call a brown bag listening session where I, I even listen to staff or meet with the executive team. So I really build the search to look how you guys want it to be. I, I'll give you those suggestions, like Survey Monkey, we put those out, those are fantastic, those can go out to the community. But they can also go, you can conduct a survey internally just to get the temperature of what the culture's like right now in the organization. So I build the recruitment around what the council wants, but I'll offer up different steps that we can do in the recruitment. That I think make it much more inclusive and so that all voices feel heard, because I know that's really important. Um, so I hope that answers your question.
If I could just also, just Valerie, I'm sorry, just, we'd want to make sure the candidate also understands the really uniqueness of Eugene. And the dynamics between Lane County, Springfield and that trifecta there. Um, you know, from the outside looking in, from just a hundred miles north and, and working at the statewide level. Uh, Eugene is uh, very unique and be able to work really well with those other partners is gonna be very important. As we're filtering and making sure we're asking the right questions of the ideal candidate for Eugene.
And our third question is gonna be from councillor Zelenka.
Yeah, since you're not here in Eugene, um, Jeff, you're in Vancouver and uh, um, Valerie, you're Zach area. Just to live in Sacramento, I like. Uh, and uh, how are you actually gonna do this? How's it gonna pull this off?
The recruitment, so, I mean, we've, I've conducted, I'm just gonna quickly tell you, uh, forty city manager recruitments our firm has conducted in the past two years. So um, I feel like I live and breathe city manager, executive director and GM recruitments, um, in working with elected officials. So we, like I mentioned, we build a recruitment, the timeline. But really, the most important piece, after we've heard everything that you guys have to say, what you're looking for, and we build our brochure. And the ad texts that are going out, we market the position. The most important part that I think you should be looking for in the recruiter is their outreach. You know, who are we gonna call? Who is in our network? So I can tell you, I think there's a lot of good firms, and I know you guys have talked to many good firms this evening. And um, I think, you know, what makes us, to me, a little more unique is our ability to tap into our, like, social network. We have um, over forty-two thousand followers on LinkedIn. That's more than a lot of our competitors combined. Um, and I bring that up because that gives us access to folks that belong to ICMA, National League of Cities, Women League of Government. The National Forum for, for Black Public Administrators. Um, it gives us access to all their members because one, we sponsor a lot of those groups. Two, they follow us on LinkedIn, and so we can post things into those groups and they can see the brochure. I did that, I do that for all my recruitments. Um, you know, so it's where we're placing ads, it's the outreach, it's the phone calls, and it's those weekly updates that we provide to our clients. So that you're not in the dark, you know what's going on with the recruitment. And you guys may offer us names. I mean, I always ask, is there anyone out there that you want us to reach out to? Even if it's another city manager in a neighboring city, you can bet they're gonna be on our list. But it's always nice to have a council member saying, hey, I really think she's doing a great job in this city, but we're gonna reach out to that candidate. And then give you an update on that candidate as well. So it's the phone calls, it's the social media outreach. We also have over seven thousand folks that subscribe to our monthly newsletter and we post all our new searches in there. So it's just a lot of eyes on it and people share it. I know, I utilize LinkedIn, I'm a techie, so I love that stuff. Um, and I've built up our following, and so I really rely on a lot of that for networking. And then we sponsor a lot of events. We attend, we're attending the League of Cities in California that's coming up. We attend other conferences when we know we take on a search in another state. Sometimes we'll purposely attend a conference so that we can network and recruit. I also host, I host a luncheon first, uh, they're for female city managers, but city managers uh, twice a year um. On the West Coast and invite folks throughout California, Washington and Oregon to attend. And we get quite a showing, could be up to, you know, forty or fifty women, which is really awesome. Most of them city managers, some assistant city managers, and it's just a great networking event. But I, for me selfishly, it's a, it's also an event for me to, to recruit, so that's kind of our approach.
Oh, thanks. Uh, I'm, uh, you know, I, I, I had a follow-up question as far as diversity was concerned, but I think you've already kind of answered that in your presentation.
Mm-hmm.
Let me ask you this question. Um, your uh, your deliverables are all-inclusive, thirty-seven thousand. Um, uh, can you talk a little bit about that? And then also, I noted in my notes, uh, looking over your proposal, uh, and what you just mentioned about internal and external outreach. Can you amplify that a little bit more, particularly internal outreach that you uh, alluded to?
Yes.
And are there, are there other services that on top of that thir- thirty-seven K that you're offering?
So yes, so I'll start with the internal and then I'll kind of segue into the other two things that you asked about. But the internal can look very different. So sometimes I meet with executive team members, which I call the E-team, which is the, you know, department heads that report into the city manager. Uh, sometimes it's as a group, sometimes it's just one-on-one, twenty minutes, kind of listening, getting their input, what are they looking for? Talk about the cultures, challenges and opportunities. So I can do that, that's a, that's a Zoom, and I, I can, we pick dates, we do a doodle poll and get people scheduled. And Jeff and I would do that together. I would be the lead recruiter on this, by the way, just so you know. Um, I've also done brown, kind of brown bag lunch. I brought, I touched on that briefly. And that's a Zoom as well, where, you know, I said, I've done it, uh, for one city, it was Manhattan Beach. I had one at six-thirty in the morning, and then I had one that was in the evening, because everyone's shifts were different. And this is, this was the staff, and these were guys that were public works, you know, police officers, fire. And so what I did is they could drop in and just listen or offer some feedback on, you know, what they're, or, uh, what I found is there were always the same five people that wanted to speak, but other people actually had questions about the process. So I think it helps alleviate the stress a little bit when I can walk through the process. Plus, I think it also sends, sends a positive message when council says, yes, we want the recruiter to speak to staff and the executive team. Because it's stressful to have a change in city management. And so I think letting them have a voice um, is fantastic. It doesn't hold up the timeline in any way, but it's just helpful for me. Uh, we also um, suggest Survey Monkey, which you can do one that's internal and it could be multiple choice or open-ended questions. We post, you can post the results of that on your website, or we can post it, or we can share it with potential candidates. Because good candidates are gonna ask about the culture of the organization. Um, and then, you know, external, it's very similar as well, you know, can it be Zoom? I can do in-person as well, that's an extra onsite visit. Um, you know, or Jeff can do that, because he's right there. But we can do like a town hall style. We did that for Laguna Beach. We were actually there and had people show up. Oh, and I did it for the city of Pinole. I went on a Saturday, we had donuts and coffee and about fifteen people showed up and just shared their thoughts. And I was there for two hours and it was really nice. I got my notes. And I gave the council a brief summary, just bulletized of what I heard from either the internal staff and external. So that you guys get that feedback. So that's kind of the internal, kind of listening, getting their, their input on the recruitment. And then you asked about um, additional fees or, or the all-inclusive and the thirty-seven. I mean, that, that's, that's a, the, the full recruitment, you know, nuts and bolts. Um, that's, you know, the kickoff meetings, that, that allows for two onsite meetings, which would be for the first round of panel interviews and the final round of panel interviews, or however we set it up. Uh, every city does a little different. I know Vancouver, we did it different than Sparks, then we did it different than Louisville. So we can lay out some different things, you know, some had a meet and greet, um, you know. So it's, it can be very different, but I'm there and so will Jeff be onsite to help facilitate whatever we're doing onsite that day. Um, so that, that fee includes, includes our, you know, the travel for two onsite meetings. Um, if you want to be onsite additionally, that's an additional fee. Uh, we also um, conduct or can offer up Clifton Strength Finder. It's kind of like, it's not a DISC assessment, which we can do that as well, but there's a Clifton Strength Finder if you wanted on the final, the final candidate to do some kind of assessment. I know in Vancouver, they had a psychologist that actually came in and met with each of the candidates for about thirty minutes and then gave their assessment to the council. And um, you know, that's a contact that I could offer up. It's not through us, that would be a separate consultant that does it. But yeah, I thought it was really interesting and Jeff, you probably can speak to that, because you came from Vancouver. And that was the first time I'd worked with a city that actually had a psychologist come in and meet with the candidates, one-on-one. So those are just some different things that um, I can mention that we can offer up, uh, that are extra. But those Zoom internal meetings, those aren't, those aren't extra, that's part of the package.
I'm familiar with the Clifton Strengths uh, uh, profile, so yeah, I've been through that. And uh, so yeah, I, I, I'm well aware and well familiar with that.
Okay.
Uh, do other councillors have questions uh, uh, for Valerie and Jeff? Do you have any further questions for us?
I do have a question for you councillor Evans and the rest of the councillors. So I, I, I was looking that you're gonna start your community survey on July seventh. Do you anticipate those results being available before the end of the summer?
You know, I am not quite sure yet. Um, maybe we've got somebody on the, on the call from city staff who can answer that question.
Sure thing councillor. Hi Jeff and Valerie Mia Carriaga, Central Services Director. Those results will not be um, complete before the end of the summer. The survey will be underway for several weeks once it kicks off.
Okay, I, I, I understand, it, it, kind of the Northwest, we just, we really value community engagement. Uh, I know when my own police chief recruitment I went through, they wanted it to be YouTube televised. Um, which had a layer of stress to it as a candidate, but it really added value from the community's perspective to be heard. And uh, whether it's the Engage Eugene platform that we use with you, or the different platforms that Valerie offered. Um, we'd be thrilled to be able to provide that and, and partner with you all.
Okay.
So I believe we're at time and um, I want to thank you Valerie and Jeff for uh, interviewing with us this afternoon. I know it's a holiday weekend, uh, so uh, have a great weekend and we will be in touch.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you so much. Have a nice evening.
All right, you too. Uh.
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay.
We got, we got through it.
We did it.
Yes. So do we wanna uh, do some debriefing now, or do we wanna schedule a time when we can do it later? Um, I, 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 I think I've got a top four.
Councillor, if I may?
Yeah.
So right now, the firms are aware that the top three will be invited to an interview with the full council on July ninth, which is one week day. So it's possible, if all of you think you can arrive at, you know, two to three to four, that you want to interview with the full council, then I could notify them really soon so they could prepare.
Well, I, I can give you my, you know, my top four now. I, I don't know about the rest of council.
You kick us off Greg.
Well, um, uh, I, I had CPS HR as one of the, the, the finalists. Um, also Bob Murray and Associates. Um, uh, Ralph Tellis and uh, WBCP. Those were my top four.
Uh, my top three were Bob Murray, Ralph Anderson and CPS.
Okay.
Um. I, not in any particular order, also liked the same four that Greg did. Um. We're supposed to pick three, right?
Yeah.
Uh, Alan, can you say yours again one more time?
Uh, Murray, Ralph Anderson and CPS.
Oh, CPS.
First.
Excellent.
Yeah, I, I like CPS. I like Heather from Ralph Anderson. WBCP and Bob Murray be my top four, trying to narrow it down to three.
Do we go with, so we go with four Mia? Yeah, I think they're pretty close.
Yes, you can certainly go with four. Our only constraint is of course that we'll be working with a ninety-minute work session.
Ninety-minute format, I got you. So we'll have to consolidate and condense. But.
We, we all liked Bob Murray and CPS, so those two are pretty easy.
For sure, yeah.
Is the uh.
Ralph Tellis and WBCP, um, you know, I, I, I found them to be pretty close. They both did, you know, really good jobs on the interviews, but I think the last interview we, we had, um, with uh, you know, uh. Where, where, where am I at on my list here? Um, with, with Bob Murray and Associates. Um, yeah, I, I, I really liked them and, and actually I like, I liked all four of those. But uh, you know, I, I, I think that other people will have to weigh in on, on, you know, the final selection. And price-wise, they're all pretty much in the same ballpark.
Yeah.
I was a little, I was a little disturbed about, you know, one of them saying, oh, well, we can do everything for eighteen thousand. And then there's eighteen thousand plus this, plus this, plus this, which was gonna be up to thirty thousand and over after that anyway. So price-wise between thirty to forty thousand base. And then on top of that, there may be some additional expenses to go with travel and um, other things on that.
Um, do we know if anybody, it looks like um, Ralph Anderson, which was the one Lindsay and Alan were really like, they worked with us before. Do we know if that was good or bad? If it was good, I'm willing to back them because we have some history with them and a good. That might be a good reason to tip them over at the top, and that we know that those went well. I know it's been a while, but.
I unfortunately can't speak to that.
Okay.
Yeah, they did, they, they did the search in Lake Oswego, uh, Scottsdale, Arizona, San Bernardino. Um, Charlotte, Compton, California, Calabasas. That's, that was uh, Ralph Anderson and Associates.
Yeah, uh, what I liked about them was their uh, the way that they described the process, Jennifer's question, like. Going to each councillor, figuring out the applications, attributes, issues and, and, and um, uh. And they, she knew that the mayor does it, he wasn't involved in the council.
Right.
It didn't, which I thought was very impressive. Talked to Sarah, uh, do the brochure, ID the candidates, including the passive candidates, which I thought was an interesting way to talk about it. So that means going out and pe- recruiting people who aren't necessarily looking, that's kind of what headhunters do. Um, and uh, and then we would see all the materials before they put them out. I, I'll do that, but you said that several times, um, and then. Um, and then be there for the, uh, for the critical meetings and help evaluate them. I like the, I like the way that she talked about that.
I mean, I'd be okay with Ralph being our last one. I would be okay with that. I mean.
So I just want to make sure I'm tracking the, the one that everyone had in common, the two that everyone had in common were Bob Murray and Associates and CPSHR.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I'm not clear.
We also decided on WBCP, this three out of, they were on three out of four.
Four of us, yeah. WCP was pretty impressive to me. Besides, I, I, I know one of their people too, so.
Three out of four of you. Gotcha, okay. And you all are landing on all of them. Okay.
Yeah, if we're going to do a fourth one, I'm okay with Ralph Anderson, even though he wasn't on my list.
Okay, I'm gonna do it that, two, four.
Those are my top four, so I'm happy with it.
We want to make the cut at three?
Four.
Four, okay, let's do four and we'll get there within ninety minutes next week.
So can, I've got a couple of questions.
Go for it.
Okay, I will, we'll reach out to the, these four firms and I'm just going to repeat them one more time to make really sure. Bob Murray and Associates, CPSHR, WBCP and Ralph Anderson and Associates, correct?
Correct.
Alrighty, so, um, given that we have a ninety minute work session and four, hmm, firms, do you want them to have something prepared to begin with? Okay, and do you have ideas about what you'd like them to cover? Like, can I give them some prompts is my question?
Um, yeah, I, I, I think that we want them to have something prepared. That's one piece of it. Second is, um, you know, uh, uh, addressing their experience and their outreach and their network, um, is, i- is a critical piece to me as well as, um, um, their experience with, uh, developing diverse pools.
Yeah, uh, I think when they come in, they, they want to talk about that firm. Say, you know, who are they with, where have they been in business? I would, I would like to hear them talk specifically about their city manager recruitment experience. I think that's really critical. Uh, the stuff that Greg said, including the, the process that they're going to use and in particular how they intend to, what's the best practice for involving a council? Or how does that work in their process? How do they involve the council?
You know what else is going to be important too is maybe them talking a little bit more about their, their, uh, public engagement process? Because that's going to be a big part of this search. And I remember when we were doing the search for when John was hired as city manager, you know, I, I, I was part of the cast of, uh, community members that were in on that outreach and, uh, interview process with the final three candidates that we selected from, um, when we hired John. So, um, I think how they conduct that and, and the way they do that is going to be important and critical. Both from the community standpoint, but also what our last, uh, interviewee, um, you know, talked about, which was the internal, uh, outreach process, uh, with staff.
I hate to say this, but, um, if we have ninety minutes and we have four candidates, that's basically twenty minutes a candidate. We just had twenty minutes a candidate and there were only four of us. We're going to have, I'm really not sure we have time for four. Somebody's going to ask questions of, I mean, we all know our colleagues, people are going to ask questions. I'm just a little concerned we're going to run out of time.
I was just going to say the same thing. It would, I think, be the best case scenario for us to narrow this down a little bit more to three. Um, because our other colleagues have not gotten a chance to pour into these applications and materials and, um, you know, hear, hear from all of them. We want our finalists to be able to present a little bit more in-depth information. Um, I would also, if they can, present some sort of, yeah, like presentation where they can present their, um, kind of graphic design concepts. I think it's an important piece. You know, many of them, you know, are saying, hey, we are, we are paying for advertising here. We are putting this out there. Um, I think visual aesthetics makes a huge difference and some of them I hated and some of them I loved, you know? Um, some of, and that, the, the combination of like, um, like, one of them I, I know is in our top, I, they were in the top of my, of like process and in the bottom in terms of like my graphic like of them, you know? Um, so that's really difficult, but I think we should narrow it down.
Well, the other, the other option is to go with four and extend the meeting time. We don't, we're going to have to do it for ninety minutes. We can do it for two hours. You give each one thirty minutes. I think that's probably, given, given what you just said, Lindsay, that nobody else is, other people haven't seen this, I think giving them four is probably a better idea than, than giving, than having three and extending the meeting.
Well, yeah, I think we should definitely extend the meeting if we're going to keep all four. Because twenty minutes isn't going to be enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, let, 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 let's, you know, propose that to the mayor that we go with, uh, you know, a, a, you know, two hour, a two hour work session is going to be one of our last of the, uh, of, of the summer and we won't be back again until, you know, to even discuss most of this until September anyway.
And staff can just mail us a couple of Red Bulls that we'll have through the entire thing.
Um, would it be possible for staff to create something that kind of, um, compares all the costs for the other councillors? I mean, Greg was asking some great questions about it, but having it all together for folks might be helpful. I mean, they're all kind of around the same ballpark, but I feel like that's going to be a question people have is like, what's this going to cost us, right?
Yeah, what I would suggest is that, you know, traditionally because council doesn't have the authority to contract on the city's behalf, what I would suggest is that you choose the top firm and then we, we will be tasked with negotiating a contract.
Okay.
Reason.
Yeah, and they're all pretty much in the same ballpark.
And I like Lindsay's, um, question about their graphics branding type stuff. I mean, they all sound like they all have the same networks, but it's all basically the same.
Yeah, and they all, and they all talk about their brochure, so that's.
Yeah, so.
See what you got.
I don't want to hear about, like, they all talk to Oregon League of Cities, like, great, like, I could, we can do that, like that. I want to hear about the things that make them different from each other, so.
Right.
I mean, maybe that's one of the questions is somehow like to get them to tell us what makes them unique, you know? Why, what are, what's different about them?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I like the take you.
Can I just ask a question about process? Um, at this point, I don't think we can assume that we are able to have a two-hour meeting. The mayor kind of has to either request that or we have to extend it during the meeting, which I think is kind of disrespectful to a presenter if we, what, somehow say no. I, I don't think we would, but their ability to actually present is dependent upon our extension. I think we should pick three if the mayor does allow that to go forward. Um, we could invite the fourth one, but I, I, I think we're all going to be very busy over this weekend, possibly, right? It's a holiday weekend, um, to be able to like come back as this body to make that decision. Then later, I, I, I'd like us to pick our top three and then if we do have the time, we could invite the fourth.
That's a good idea.
Well, why wouldn't we be able to extend it?
I think it's disrespectful to ask somebody to prepare a presentation without an assurance that they will actually be able to present in the event that we don't actually extend it.
I got that. I, I don't understand why we couldn't, like, we can't just have a two-hour meeting. There's some reason we wouldn't be able to extend it to two hours.
Well.
Notice it.
Everybody else might hate the idea, just because.
I mean, I guess we have mostly a quorum right now, but, um, I just don't like, I don't like living in, in uncertainty when we're asking people to do a lot of work to prepare for it.
Well, we need a half hour for Mike alone.
Go ahead Catherine, jump on in, I see you.
No, I was just gonna, I was gonna remind folks that we're gonna need to, so at the meeting that we're talking about, so even, let's just say it is two hours long, it won't be thirty minutes per group, you, or you, because you're going to need time to deliberate and we need a decision from the council.
Oh, right.
Um, it's not, I mean, we're talking, we're, it's still going to be twenty, probably twenty minutes per group, even with a two-hour meeting to give you all time to talk and, and decide, make a motion, send us on our way for the summer break.
Or maybe we could do a fifteen minutes per firm and, and, and go from there.
We couldn't do that today. Maybe we should just do three. I'm just gonna, I would be okay with three. I'm just going to put it out there.
I'd rather have, do the interviews and have a separate meeting where we discuss which ones to pick.
We do not have time to add another meeting before our summer break, I don't think, do we?
We can add a meeting anytime we want.
I mean.
You say that as somebody who does not have children at home. During summer break.
My wife does though.
I don't, I don't see the problem in our, the, the four of us choosing one additional group to kind of today so that we can actually get through the ninth and make a decision.
I mean, all of them would be able to do the job.
They can all do the job. I think we have, we've come up with a very solid top two. You know?
And we, if three of us agree on the third one.
Yeah, that's three out of four. That's a pretty good percentage.
Yeah, how long do you think, let's work backwards, how long do you think it will take for us to deliberate?
Um, depending on the presentation, I, 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 I don't know Alan, but, um, I, I think if we, if, if, if we're very clear in terms of the instructions we have to the rest of council that we need to, to do this in one meeting, that that, you know, uh, would signal to folks that, um, you know, we're not going to have time for multiple questions, but, you know, you're going to have to read your packet and do your analysis before you come to the table and then listen to the interviews and make a decision from there.
Yeah, we can, we can do that. And then if you did, if you did three minutes each times eight, that's twenty-four.
Yeah, so it's a half an hour.
Other gyrations of that.
Or two and a half minutes each.
I mean, it's still a half an hour.
Still a half an hour.
I mean, the mayor's going to want to talk, somebody's going to want two rounds, like.
Can I suggest that we remove Ralph Anderson from our list? Their brochures were not very good. I really liked Heather. I thought she had a lot of good experience in Oregon. I think that some of the other groups have maybe a little bit more of an energy towards what we're looking for.
Uh, I would agree with that.
I would be okay with that too.
That's fine, they were in my top two, but, um, that's fine, it could be a three. Give them twenty minutes of each, twenty, thirty, sixty. And I.
So we'll do it, we're doing Bob Murray. Uh, we're going to do, uh, WCP and then, um.
CPSHR.
Yeah, CPSHR.
Yeah, and I think everybody should get a message that, well, it'll probably go wrong in ninety minutes.
Yeah. Right, and.
So.
Read, read the packet.
Sure. Um, I have a question about, so the mayor doesn't, this is a council decision.
Yes.
It's, and, and so the mayor's participation is a question to me. She would only, um, vote if we tie.
Right.
Right, so that means she has to be involved in the conversation.
Right.
And, uh, I, it doesn't matter to me if she voices her opinion or not. I, that's a different matter when it comes to the, uh, selection of the candidate, so. Unless, same, unless we tie.
Well, in my last conversation with the mayor, I was pretty clear to say, you know, this is a council decision. Um, and, you know, by, you know, uh, y- y- you know, by city charter, she doesn't weigh in un- unless we're tied and we can't, you know, move forward. So I don't have a problem with her participating in the process. However, we note that this is a decision among the eight of us.
I'm not sure why we're talking about the process and I think we all know that.
Well, then it's, then it's, it's three times nine.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we assumed she would be there.
Yeah. She's balled around the meeting, so.
So can I recap what I think I've heard? I, we're, we narrowed it to three firms, Bob Murray, CPSHR, WBCP. It seems it would still be helpful councillor Evans for you to ask the mayor if the meeting can be a two-hour meeting on July ninth.
I will ask.
Thank you. Then I will work with the firms to have them prepare presentations that they will start with for their thirty-minute, they'll each have thirty minutes um, for probably, I'll say, you know, a six to eight-minute presentation that addresses their experience, their experience with outreach, their experience developing diverse pools. Talk sort of overall about their firm, their experience with city manager recruitment and the process they may use. And, um, we'll ask them to mention how they will involve council. And perhaps I can ask them to submit a graphic design sample before that day councillor Leach, so that.
Yeah, they already, they, I mean, they already submitted that they had, um, you know, they sent to us. Um, but maybe they can pick one or two and that we can put up on the screen.
Okay, and that will, if, if the two-hour meeting works for the mayor, then that will give all of you thirty minutes to deliberate.
Yeah, it's not just the mayor though, you had to ask the other four. Yeah, so they can do a two-hour meeting too.
She has the authority though, because it basically.
But if they're not going to be there.
Well, that's true. If they drop off, right?
Not appropriate.
So I'll ask them to, to, to put out a request that we, uh, add an extra thirty minutes to the work session.
Sending out a link prior to the meeting, to this meeting, um, with the times where these three finalists show up in the meeting could also be helpful to your colleagues, um, in preparing for the discussion, so they're not hearing, they're actually benefiting from this meeting, if, for those that, that would choose to do that, that's something we could do on our end.
Yeah. But I would, I would suggest that tomorrow morning, staff check in with the other four councillors on whether or not they are available for an extra thirty minutes.
Wow.
On the ninth.
Because if they are, we'll want to drop down the time for the candidates.
Yeah.
To twenty minutes.
Yeah, someone has a burning issue they can't get out of. I don't, but somebody might.
We will do that.
Perfect.
Councillor Evans, you're calling up with the mayor to make that request.
I'm, I'm doing it right now.
Awesome.
I'm typing it as we speak.
Thank you.
I'm running time.
Very impressive, you guys, that you have this kind of tool. I think it's really great to have the quality that you'll be able to bring forward to the next round. It was a great process.
It was. It was a fun process. And I appreciate you all helping it all together and facilitating this meeting. It was so seamless between all of the candidates, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks everybody. All right, are we good?
We're good.
All right, bye everybody.
Talk to you next week. Have a great weekend.
You too.